I think our mics are on and we are ready to roll. Everybody, uh, everybody's ready. Uh, I will ask, uh, Councilman Bradford, can you give us an invocation?
Certainly.
And, um, Councilman Flurry, would you like to give us a pledge?
I'd do so. The stand at this bow. Christ the Father, we come again, Lord, thanking you for this opportunity to come together as city leaders to transact the business of this city. Pray, Lord, for this city and our officials, the mayor, the city councilmen. We became conscious, Lord, that another officer, law enforcement officer, was killed in the line of duty. We pray for his family. We pray for the law enforcement community throughout the state and the country. Bless this meeting in a special way. Direct us in the path that you have us to go. All these blessings, we ask in our name. Amen.
Please place the flag. People, people. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Flurry, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Marvin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Here.
Ms. Metz. Mr. Bowman.
Here.
All right, tomorrow, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference from August 10th, 2015, and the city council meeting from Tuesday, August 11th, 2015, at this time. Um, and that brings us to awards, recognition of distinguished guests, and communications. Uh, do any council members have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests that they would like to acknowledge at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge, now that we have a king on board.
Oh, nice.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I, uh, I enjoyed, I was, uh, I was, uh, I had a coronation as the, uh, king of the crew of Highland this weekend, and, uh...
So you don't partake in any of that debauchery, so I'm glad to hear that you're not cognizant of that, as a level well above.
Oh, my wife said it was okay, and I didn't get in any trouble, so we'll leave it at that. But it was a good time, and, uh, looking forward to a good Mardi Gras season. It's great to have, uh, those things that make us uniquely Louisiana and fun to be a part of it. Um, so, uh, but I appreciate that, and also I did want to recognize, um, just appreciate them being here. There are several representatives of the, including Liz Swain and other, um, board members, um, from the Downtown Development Authority and DSDC that are available, uh, to answer questions later on in the agenda if we, um, have questions about, um, Resolution 155. Um, seeing no other...
Sure, anytime John Hubbard here is here, I mean, I think we should always recognize somebody. I mean, even though he's a couple rows back today from normal.
You can't not. I mean, he's hiding there, but, um, well, great. Well, thank you, John, for being here, too. And I did want to, um, just briefly, uh, recognize Julie Glass, so she can, uh, tell us about, uh, the, the good forward planning, but also sad to even think it's a possibility at some point, um, the reason that we have Ingrid up here with us as well.
Just wanted, I think you all know Ingrid James. Uh, she's just going to be sitting up here off and on, uh, learning the ropes, uh, and so that I may leave eventually someday, but there's not a, you know, timetable on that.
Wonderful.
She's gonna be learning the ropes.
Well, we appreciate having you here, Ingrid, and, uh, hopefully we are easier to follow than we sometimes may feel like we are. But, um, thank you for being here. All right, Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards or recognitions or communications at this time?
Not today. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, um, we're now at reports. Um, does any, uh, member have a question or concern relative to property standards that they need to address at this point in time? Mayor Terrence is here, and he will be available if anybody has anything. I don't see anything right now. Um, all right, and, um, then we, let's see, we got a revenue collection and...
Elena, ask the question.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir.
On the revenue, uh, monthly report on the website.
Yes, sir.
You may have explained this, but why are we not having any of 2015 monthly financial reports posted to the website?
That's a good question, Mr. Flurry, and I'll check it for you, and we'll have those...
I, I get it from you, but some of the citizens had asked me why it wasn't on there, so that's the reason I made the inquiry.
Absolutely. Good question, and we'll find out for you.
Great. And, um, we did also, uh, receive the Shorty Bond forfeiture report, uh, earlier this month, and is there a representative from MPC here today?
Uh, yeah.
Are we gonna have a, well, have a report tomorrow? Great, thank you. Um, all right, and we don't have a public hearing scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll move on to adding items to the agenda. Um, and, uh, so, let's see, Mr. Crawford, is there any legislation that's gonna be added tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Um, we have, uh, public comments. We have, the only two that I have are items that are not on the agenda, so, um, we will wait till the appropriate time at the end of the meeting.
Do we now do it at the end of the...
We actually don't have it on, uh, Mondays anymore, but we can suspend the rules really at any time. If y'all'd like to take them up now, we can suspend the rules and take up two requests to speak, both on the same subject. Um, so I'm open to that if somebody wants to make a motion now.
Make a motion. Suspend the...
Okay. Uh, motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bradford to suspend the rules to hear, uh, the public comment requests. And... Is it all in favor, just raising their hand, or do we need...
Oh, it's...
I know, it's up there. This screen is off for me today, I'm sorry. A motion passes with 6-0. Uh, yeah, 6-0. Um, okay, let's see, I'd like to call up David Dethloff and, um, John Hubbard, uh, to speak regarding the Barksdale Air Show.
Thank you for the consideration. John Hubbard, 428 Travis, 7111, and David will have a comment afterwards. But, uh, this is simply to say thank you for supporting the Barksdale Air Show. Uh, I am, uh, I have, I guess, served my term, or multiple terms, uh, as, as vice-chair of the air show, and, uh, the dollars that the City of Shreveport have put in to support their show have made a difference. Uh, our show has gotten better. It, it seems the number of people attending have, have grown, and it all has to do with the, the public support we're getting, uh, that hadn't always been there, and I appreciate your understanding and, uh, value of that, certainly from a biased perspective. But, uh, what that means, the Barksdale Air Force Base itself, what it means, uh, the Pentagon looking at the base, uh, and the jet teams that we get, all those things factor in because our region is behind it 100 percent. David will be going to International Council of Air Shows in December to find out the jet team schedule. Historically, we've gotten the last weekend of April, or the first weekend of March, I may, excuse me, and, uh, we will know then what teams we get, and then they will, if you will, go through this tremendously large hall of a lot of air show acts and see what's there. And there's everything from jet portlets to jet teams, so, uh, and everything in between. So it's a, a very unique place. So, again, thank you for your support, it means a lot, and I think you see that by the 125,000 to 140,000 people that showed up last year, so. Any questions? Dave?
I'd like to thank you also, David Dethloff, 343 Janie Lane. I appreciate your, your past support and look forward to, uh, your future support. And anything that I can do, just give me a call, and I'll be there to help. I look forward to your help also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comments. Um, now we are at confirmations and appointments. Um, tomorrow we'll have the following appointments to be considered. Uh, it is, uh, for the Police, Fire, and Civil Service Board, uh, Mr. Michael Carter and Mr. Joseph Lewis. And if my memory is right, I thought we had another one.
Cato Port Commission, Mr. Roy Greggs.
Yes. Somehow that did, that's not on my script, I apologize, but, um, I thought we had one. Um, and then for the Cato, uh, Port Commission, uh, is Roy Greggs to be considered. Does anybody have any questions about any of these appointments to be considered tomorrow?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a, a question at this point, but I, I wanna, if anybody can tell me, I know Mr. Greggs is new, Mr. Carter, Mr. Lewis, are these reappointments?
Uh, no, actually, each, uh, time there is, uh, and I don't remember how many years, and I'm gonna ask, uh, Mr. Bradford to come up, but these people were submitted to me by the, um, police and, uh, and, uh, association, and, and we have to take their recommendations.
That's correct.
We don't have a choice, I just have to bring them as my appointments.
That's correct, Mayor. The, uh, Councilman Bradford, the, both the police and the fire department hold elections, and those representatives are then submitted to the council for appointments to the Civil Service Board. That's where they come, those particular appointments come from.
Okay, so there, there's no...
There's no...
Okay.
I believe there are four candidates, and we take the top two, I mean...
That's correct. There's four candidates, we take the top two, uh, of the elected body for, for those, for both departments. So there, I believe the two for fire have already gone up and been confirmed, and the two for police are up for appointment now.
All right, okay, well, I have no discussion on these two.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, seeing no other, uh, comments, we will move on, uh, to consent agenda legislation. There's no items for introduction under consent, um, but, Mr. Crawford, can you continue with the items to be adopted?
Certainly. Resolution 143 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus and otherwise providing due respect thereto. Resolution 144, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Rotary Clubs of Shreveport's Food Truck Wars. Resolution 145 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport, City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Unseen Festival. Resolution 147, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport, Shreveport, I'm having trouble with Shreveport today, Code of Ordinances relative to Digi Fest South. Resolution 147, accepting dedication of a 20-foot-wide utility servitude in Long Lake Estates, Unit Number 22A. Resolution 148 authorizes Vincent Gallegos Senior and Carolyn Gallegos located at 5557 Jefferson Page Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the City of Shreveport.
All right, are there any questions about any of these? We've all agreed to make them pass. If anybody wants one removed or anything, let us know, but, um, but they all appear to be fairly standard. Um, if anybody has any questions, please let us know if we need to remove something. Uh, it can be done tomorrow as well. So now we're at regular agenda legislation, uh, and if you would, Mr. Crawford, please proceed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage. Resolution 138 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Reunion Development LLC herein called Owner and acting herein through Ben Tullis, Manager, for the private water and sewer main extension and related facilities to serve Reunion Subdivision Phase Two. Resolution 139 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Steve Simon Construction Incorporated herein after called the Owner and acting herein through Brad Simon, Manager, for the private water and sewer main extension and relative facilities to serve West Wilderness Subdivision. Resolution 140 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Nicely Properties Incorporated herein after called Owner and acting herein through Jeremy Nicely, Manager, for the private water and sewer main extension and relative facilities, related facilities to serve Norris Ferry Crossing, Unit Nine. Resolution 149 recognizes Captain Reginald Washington of the Shreveport Police Department for mentoring and coaching young people for the greater Shreveport community since 1980 to congratulate the sixth grade Shreveport Lady Ballers for winning the AAU State Championship. Resolution 155 authorizes the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the agreement dated July 30th, 1999, between the City of Shreveport and the Downtown Shreveport Development Corporation herein sometimes referred to as the DSDC or DSDC, declaring the intentions of the City of Shreveport to delete the provision setting forth in its reversionary interest of the Shreveport Garage, declaring the intention of the city to accept from the Downtown Shreveport Development Corporation the amount of $500,000 United States Dollars as consideration for the First Amendment to the agreement, declaring the intentions of the city to utilize the $500,000 received for this amendment for the purposes of an economic development project in downtown Shreveport.
Okay, um, now, these are, uh, these are resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage. For some reason, I thought that, um, Resolution 155 was for first reading and needs to be...
It was in the wrong place, and we...
It's a due read.
To the correct.
Okay, so, so we still read it in the wrong place, but on tomorrow's agenda, it will be in the right place. Okay, great. Um, so, does anybody have any additional questions? Oliver.
I have a couple of questions for Liz, if she has a second. Sue? Obviously, it's Resolution 155, and I do appreciate, uh, the email did clarify some of the things that, uh, we had discussed. So, I understand that that income stream is some, has a significant value to the DSDC, essentially, but, uh, what is the value of, I mean, why are y'all offering us the 500? Do we get some of that revenue stream as it stands today?
You get none.
We don't get any?
You get none. The city has no ownership position in the parking garage. It is a reversionary right that the city may be able to utilize in 2043. Very confusing. It was set up to be that way, unfortunately, many years ago before all of us.
Not that we would ever be in a position to turn down half million dollars, but it does beg the question why you would offer it in the first place if it really doesn't have any material value to us.
Right.
I understand where the material value is to you.
It does have value to them, and I think the other, um, and that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would think the other motivation on their behalf is that they would like to see us, um, use this money to encourage additional park locations in downtown.
Correct. That's, that's the value it has to us, Councilman Jenkins.
They are accomplishing their, their mission as an organization while at the same time clearing up a revenue stream of their...
And it gives you a cleaner title, I guess.
Absolutely. Let me, can I brag for just a moment on DSDC? It's a remarkable organization.
Said no, what would you...
I would be very sad, and I would go home. DSDC is a remarkable organization. It's a nonprofit organization that was set up, um, a number of years ago, and their goal, their mission statement is to encourage, protect, create opportunities in downtown. Over the years, DSDC has invested millions of dollars into downtown through low-interest-revolving loan funds, facade grant programs, uh, the Robinson Film Center, art space, a building on the, in the 400 block of cotton that was just developed. That is DSDC's goal in life. That's what they do, that's what those board members are concerned about, and when this opportunity came about, that we would be able to assist the city in creating 130 market-rate apartments, or whatever it would be that the city would wish to do with that money downtown to help jumpstart the development that we so desperately need downtown, it was a no-brainer. It was absolutely a no-brainer for our board, and I'm so proud of them for that.
But, I mean, I know that we've been very good at redevelopment in the City of Shreveport, but why wouldn't we keep the money in your hands to use the money for redevelopment?
Well, uh, that would certainly be an option. Um, the developer is very interested in a public-private partnership to show that public-private partnerships work in Shreveport. Um, at the point that he is coming to the city for a participation in a public-private partnership, he is also requesting the same of the parish. So I believe that this may be one of the first, if not for this building, the parish and the city came together on a public-private partnership. It just gives the city the opportunity to show that we are as concerned about our downtown and the future and vibrancy of our downtown as we are seeing across the river in Bossier City. Uh, Bossier City, I know everybody's been following the news and seeing how much money is being leveraged for the return of a downtown in what is called Old Bossier, and this gives us the chance to do, um, some remarkable things as well. And if that doesn't answer your question, I'll be happy to talk to you some more, or send you whatever information that you need, and if anybody has any questions...
It's all incongruous to me that we would, you would offer us $500,000, that arguably for something that is...
To, let me tell you, Councilman, to, go ahead. To be honest, the board had to do a lot of soul-searching. They don't believe particularly that the reversionary rights are worth anything. They really don't. And when it comes down to it, but they believe that the opportunity for this development is worth a lot, not to them, but to downtown and to the city.
And, and keep in mind that, of course, they're not offering this money, um, you know...
Strings off.
Free and clear with no, you know, they're offering it with the intention that we use it to expand parking opportunities in downtown, you know, so...
Yeah, but it doesn't necess, I mean...
Yeah, it's not necessarily committed to any particular project at this point.
Or a timeframe, is it?
That's, that's correct.
We've got more to do back.
I mean, it look...
However, I think they...
They trust the administrations and...
We, I was gonna make some comments by saying, you know...
Please do, I mean, it just, on the surface, there seems like there's gotta be a lot more to the story.
Right, right, right. And of course, we...
If we're not in a position to discuss that, I don't want to ruin a good deal.
Well, let me say this, and of course, this is really the first read, but we want to be able to address any issues that you have. We've asked this and a lot more questions, honestly. When we looked at the reversionary rights, we weren't getting any money at all, and, uh, you know, there's an opportunity for us to develop one of our downtown large buildings into some condos, and I know that that's been, uh, something that we've been trying to do with our downtown development. And I said to Liz and to the developer, we don't have any money at the city because we've got so many other infrastructure needs, so where can we get money from? And, and this was one place we could get the money, and we didn't have to try to find it because we didn't have it, honestly. We're working on budgets right now, and, you know, I'm having heartburn, but this was one way that we could come up with our portion with, uh, the parish commission to be able to make this deal happen.
And if it doesn't come to the city first, it goes straight from DSDC, then the parish could argue that we're not...
Well, absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's not then a public partnership anymore because DSDC is...
A nonprofit.
A nonprofit. And so if it comes from us, we have skin in the game. And, and so that, that was what, you know, we really were trying to demonstrate. With these rights that we have in this garage, we get no money anyway. I mean...
We may inherit a substantial liability.
Absolutely.
Chances are good.
And of course, it's my understanding that DSDC is going to actually make something out of it. Aren't you gonna do something with that garage, or will they?
Well, the board will have to determine what they would want to do once those reversionary rights, um, went away, um, you know, they may retain the...
You have a clear title.
Right. They may retain the garage, they may sell the garage to Vintage, which owns the building next to it, but whatever DSDC does, that money realized will go into downtown, which it always has. So it's, uh, and by the way, Councilman Jenkins, she's a pretty tough negotiator over here, by the way. My board was saying zero, it's worth zero, so now we're offering 500,000.
It's worth 500,000, you know, so...
Yes.
You know, we needed to come up with our portion.
Absolutely.
And once we are able to...
I get it.
To get the money, then we will come back with, you know, the other part of, uh, uh, resolution or amendment, whichever.
Okay.
To, to say that this is what we want to do with the funding, and we'll bring that to you at a later date, but this is the first step.
Seeing that there, you have a specific plan for this, kinda makes a little more sense.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
All right.
I'll go sit down now.
You, you may.
Councilman Flurry, did you have...
Oliver, my question's been answered.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Liz, I want to thank you for doing this. Uh, you're so regarded through the city and so, I, I want to work with you and the people of Southern Hills.
Great.
Because when I look at that and first saw that talk, I was a little concerned. I have no concerns now, but I, I want people to view downtown as a positive.
I do, too.
And, um, I think by maybe getting you out there to Ice Cream Social or something like that, to let them see what's going, because I, I'm new on the council, and to be honest with you, I'd, I'd like to see a bicycle lane, uh, in the area down here so that Councilman Jenkins would be safe when he rides into his office.
It's not safe down there, so I don't run my bike down there.
But anyway, I want to thank you for offering that, and, uh, look forward to working with you to...
Thank you, sir.
...spread the good news about your organization through the city.
Thank you, sir, and I would love to come speak, so just let me know when. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Liz Swain?
Yes, Councilman Bradford. Okay, uh, Liz, I'm not totally clear, I really ain't, but that's fine, but I wanted to ask, um, the provision that, that's in here, let me back up. Now, you said that was, the 500,000 was not going to exchange hands. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. The 500,000 will be given to the city.
Will be given to the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the provision that, that I see here that says for the purpose, is that, is that acceptable, Mayor, that, that they will, that they will dictate what purpose the money will be used on?
Well, we've agreed that we will use it for the purpose of helping to redevelop downtown, and, and, and that may mean, I think that that's the only reason that they are offering us the 500,000 dollars. We had to agree to that, and, and I think their vision is the same as mine. We want to thrive and robust downtown. We have the only skyline in North Louisiana, and so I did agree that I would bring that, um...
It'd be utilized?
To the council, to, to be utilized for a economic development project downtown, yes. A very specific project, and you will get more about that project once we get this particular resolution, uh, passed, and then we will talk about, you know, why we're doing what we're doing, but it is for downtown development, and it is for developing, um, a project here that's gonna help us economically.
Okay, all right, and, and that project, uh, and I'm looking at resources and revenue-generating things. Would that be a revenue-generating, uh, project?
Yes, sir.
It will be.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. Yeah, and I think, I think everybody will be quite pleased when, when they hear the ultimate use of what the...
Absolutely.
You know, what we plan to do at this...
Chairman, and everybody understands that will be on, in, on introduction.
Yeah, that is for introduction, so there is a second reading on this, there will be time for more questions, and, and I know I gave many of you a call because, um, this is one of those, um, things that has a lot of details. It's a little bit confusing, um, you know, it doesn't read, uh, to make, it's something we see every day, so, um, if anybody does have additional questions, please let us know because we, you know, we, uh, want to make sure everybody has all the information necessary to make them feel comfortable moving forward with that. But I can say it has been vetted, uh, by the administration, by myself, by multiple members of, um, the administration, and, you know, we feel good about it, and, uh, think that it's a, really a great opportunity for the city to, to be able to participate in, um, in doing something really good for downtown without, um, having to, without losing any resource that was really of, of much value to us in the first place.
Absolutely.
Chairman, I have one, we'll come in on 149.
Yes.
This is the resolution to recognize, uh, Captain Reginald Washington of the Shreveport Police Department. I've been knowing Captain Washington for 20 years. I served on his, uh, on his, on his board, AAU board, um, a chair of his fundraising, um, committee. Uh, I spoke with him last week, I said, "How much money did I raise for you while I was your chair?" He said, "He don't remember." I said, "Man, how you gonna forget that?" But anyway, uh, I would appreciate, you know, you guys, uh, my council cohorts to support this. Uh, I mean, he's a great guy, he's been working with young people for over 20 years, and, uh, what brought my attention to this was a news story that, that came over, uh, one of our local TV stations where he was, um, his team, his sixth grade Lady Ballers won the state AAU championship back in, I think it was June, and, uh, but he's won several, I mean, just, uh, many, many championships, his, uh, his teams have participated in a whole lot of, uh, regional and state and national tournaments, and just thought this would be a good time that we, uh, acknowledge what he have done with the, uh, with the this would be a good time that we, uh, acknowledge what he had done with the, uh, with the young people of this area while being a very effective and, and great police officer for the city of Shreveport.
Well, thank you so much for that, and, uh, that looks like a really nice resolution. Um, and, uh, at this point, uh, I don't see any other questions, and we are now at introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to September 8th. Mr. Crawford, can you proceed with those?
Mr. Chair, Resolution 150 ratifies the use of certain equipment by the American Legion Low McFarland Post 14. Resolution 151 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Mount Olive Baptist Church. Resolution 152 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Susan G. Coman Race for the Cure. Resolution 153 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Willis Knight Health Systems for the 20th anniversary of the Simpkins Community Health and Education Center. Resolution 154 authorizes the mayor to execute an active release of two 10-foot wide utility easements in the.
Chickapin.
Chickapin, yeah. Chickapin Meadows subdivision in Section 6, T-16 North, R-13 West.
Great, are there any questions about any of these?
One, one quick question. Did we send the Coman Group, the Chapter 10, they called me about it on Friday, saying they have not heard back from the city, saying that they were, um, saying if we had granted them, I know we voted on it last time. Don't we normally send them something or notify them?
So sometimes there's a confusion where, um, if we've passed something by, um, by resolution, uh, basically absolving the Chapter 10, then I don't think they necessarily have to have the same form, they do have to have the other form, Shelley, or no?
Are there actually being.
They're using Shreve City.
Shreve City this year. They have to have permission for Shreve City before we could do a resolution for suspending the rules?
Well, we already did it.
Um, for this year?
We did it last week.
Then y'all did it through the council office, they did not contact us about that.
Yeah, no, no, so here, let me, the last week, we voted on it and passed it. Doesn't the city council office, I'm looking at somebody over in this area, notify? I'm, I'm not looking at this side because I'm pretty sure that somebody on the city council then notifies the person that it's been passed, once the mayor signs it, at least that's way most of the other ones get done, I don't know why this would be unique.
I don't think we normally do that. They know that we put it on the agenda because they've asked us to, and we put it on there, and then they follow up and.
I'm, I'm pretty sure we, B knows, I mean, she can.
Well, once the copies are signed by the chairman, the mayor, and Mr. Thompson, we send it to the originating officer, whoever wrote it up, the author, and if it came from you.
It didn't come from.
Came from our office. Then it will be scanned and sent to them. I don't know when it was signed, has it been?
I mean, normally, that's what happened, normally, I guess, and I don't know if Lynette does it or who does it, but normally, when you put it in, then she sends them the thing that says, yes, it's all signed off and good to go. And what I'm asking is, can we check and see if we've done that for Coman because they called me on Friday and I assured them it had passed and that they can expect to get a note from the council?
Okay.
Thank you.
And I assure you, I've signed.
I did too.
That's kinda the way it's always gone, but I, I was, I mean, I'm, almost everybody else that gets one through my district gets a letter back from the city council. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, regarding, uh, Resolution 153, even though I won't be able to vote on this because, uh, this, the facility, uh, that we're celebrating is the Simpkins Community Health and Education Center on, uh, Hillary Huckabee Avenue in, in the MLK area, uh, one of the facilities that I manage. Over 20 years ago, we launched our Project Neighbor Health Initiative, bringing healthcare into underserved, medically underserved communities. On the 19th, and I wanted to correct that date, uh, we will be celebrating 20 years, and I'm gonna invite council and administration to come and be a part of that. Over the last 20 years, we've, uh, served over 100,000 patients as well as given over, uh, well, I'm not supposed to say several million dollars in free healthcare and dental care to, uh, residents and citizens of Shreveport, Georgia. We'll be celebrating that, uh, those, those accomplishments. And I wanted to make a correction, and I appreciate Shelley Regal for helping me draft this resolution, but the date is actually the 19th, not the 15th, okay? So, uh, I would appreciate your support on this, uh, resolution also.
You inviting me to it?
Oh, I need you to, I need you to help me with something.
Got some tables to move.
Set up some new, set up tables and chairs, and he goes, with the streamers, and he goes, you're a smart stuff.
Okay, uh, all right, and I see no more questions? If not, then, uh, we will move on to introduction of ordinances. Um, Mr. Crawford, can you proceed with those?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to September the 8th, 2015. Ordinance 70 declares the city's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for REIT Drive Improvements Project. Ordinance 71 authorizes the incurring of debt and issuance, sale and delivery of an amount not exceeding $42 million of taxable revenue and refunding bond Shreveport Airport System Series 2015A and 2015B of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, prescribed in the form, terms and conditions of said bonds, designating the date, denomination in place of payments of said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest. Ordinance 72 is a zoning issue C-69-15, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinance was, ordinances by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Martin Luther King Drive and David Raines Road. BN the same is hereby changed from B1 Buffer Business District and B2 SPI2 Neighborhood Business Industrial Park Overlay Business, I'm sorry, District to B3 SPI2 Community Business Industrial Park Overlay District with site plan approval.
All right, um, and let's see, uh, see a question from, uh, Councilman Jenkins.
Did this go to the Bond Commission last week, the resolution we did two weeks prior? I was under the impression, the reason we had to do it two weeks ago was to go to this whatever April 20, whatever day, I mean, that's, that was, was the argument on why we couldn't postpone it? But it didn't go there?
We, we passed a resolution the last council meeting so that we can be on October's agenda. It's, the deadline was last week, and so we passed that resolution so we would be timely on being on the October agenda.
Okay, my, I got, or September, September, I'm guessing.
September agenda.
Okay.
September agenda.
So that was my question, okay. So we had to have it in, you have to have it in a month in advance prior from the, okay, that answered my question. Okay, thank you.
Right, um, any other questions? I did notice, um, when, uh, when you chimed in, I thought maybe you were asking about the Zeke one, um, that's one, one of those that is directly on the district line.
I was gonna ask that, I don't believe it's in my district.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the project is actually in my district, but the property just to the right of it that needs to be, um, taken in is probably in my district, but there is a chance it's in yours, because there's that little levy right there, and.
I think I'm on the other side of the levy, is what, not this.
There are actual houses here, we're, we're talking about a, a little strip of land, and so, uh, you know. There's not a motor there, you don't knock on it, you know, and so, uh, it's a little strip of land, but we'll call it District B if you want, you can call it District C if you like, either way.
Is that right at the edge of Centenary's property where there's woods?
No, this is right at, um, uh, so when you're on Shreveport-Barkstall Highway where it intersects Kings Highway, and there's that sort of odd little median, when you go right over that levee, Zeke Street is, is that street that, um, leads, uh, you know, through, um, Waco and some of those Little Texas streets, um, and so just to the right of it, uh, is a pond area that, um, backs up to some housing and some apartments.
That is in my district.
That U.L. Coleman, um, owns that are in District C, but those houses in Little Texas to the left of that are in District D, so, um, so it is right there on the line.
Chair, while we are on this part of the agenda, on Ordinance 72, it's again a very positive project that's happening in the MLK area, on the corner of David Raines and MLK Drive, where the Southern University CDC, um, is proposing to have a farmers' market. I don't know, you've probably seen that already being advertised, that on Fridays, Friday mornings between 8:00 and 1:00 p.m., uh, we have vendors who's gonna come out and sell fresh, uh, produce and vegetables and order items and so forth. We've, we've started last weekend. We're just wanting this specific area to be, uh, overlaid so that we can, uh, continue to have those on a very, you know, neat and orderly facility where, like last weekend, I mean, last Friday, Thursday, it rained and it was sort of muddy, but once we get this overlaid and get pavilion up, we'll be good to go. We're gonna go until, uh, our winter produces are sold out, and we ain't having what business. But if you out and about on Friday mornings between 8:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m., and you want some fresh fruits and vegetables, the best watermelons in town, come by the MLK Farmers Market on, uh, the corner of MLK and David Raines Road.
That's a great thing to provide, and, uh, you know, we realize the city of Shreveport has a number of, uh, food deserts where access to fresh food is very limited, and certainly North Shreveport, um, in the MLK area is, is one of those areas where it is difficult, uh, to get fresh food considering the high number of people that live there, there are not a lot of places that have available fresh food, so that's a great, uh, addition to the services up there, and, uh, certainly appreciate what y'all, y'all are doing to make that possible. That's a great, uh, great thing to add. We all know that, uh, in today's day and age, uh, you know, the better, the more you can do to live healthy and eat healthy, the, it's just better for somebody's quality of life as well as the overall cost of the community, and, um, you know, it's just a challenge we all face, is that as, as our country develops and goes on, it's a lot cheaper and easier to get, uh, some dehydrated macaroni and cheese than it is to, uh, get a head of lettuce and some, some tomatoes, and that's a shame, but something that's, that's worthy of addressing, so we appreciate.
Eggs are out the yard, you know.
Good, good.
I do have, just kinda.
They're baking cakes, man.
Curious. B3 seems egregious for, for a farmer's market. I mean, why a farmer's market isn't like B1 is beyond me?
It's, and it's a B3 SPI2.
I mean, it sounds like.
This is not a, this is not a standard use anywhere, evidently, but.
It seems like, you know, a very.
It would, it would also, it would also to the common sense mind, it sort of seemed like almost an itinerant vendor's license would be fine, you know.
I mean, and you'd say, well, you wouldn't wanna B3 that close to residential area, but in this case, it's the best, I mean.
The option that we have.
Certainly.
More evidence for how great a unified development code will be in the long run.
No, I've thought about that.
All right, well, uh, let's see, now we are at, um, ordinances on second reading and final passage, and, uh, we only have a few. Uh, Mr. Crawford, can you proceed with those?
Correct, Mr. Chair, just two. Ordinance 68 amends the 2015 general fund for the police department, police administration budget. Ordinance 69 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget for the four airport projects.
Anybody have questions about these two? Um, you'll remember Rutherford House is the one where we're partnering with, uh, the parish and, uh, the school board, uh, to keep that facility open, it's obviously something that's very important to our, uh, law enforcement officers, and, um, uh, they are no longer receiving state funding, so, uh, that was that one, and then, uh, there are the four capital improvements at the airport.
If we could, Mr. Chair, before we vote tomorrow, I'd like to know, Ordinance 68, what the status of the school board and the commission's contribution are, because I've heard from some sources that the school board knows nothing about this. I'd like to confirm that if we could.
We'll find out.
We'll find out. I, I've been in conversation with some of the board members, they do know about it. In fact, I had conversation over the past two weeks with board members, and, uh.
But they might vote it or anything.
They have not voted yet. And, you know, don't know what they're gonna do. It, it is all about their children, so I'm trying to say to them, it's gonna help us all as a city, uh, we can, you know, kind of prevent some crime if we can do it, and certainly it will help keep and minimize some of the attendance problems that they have over there also, because these are really high school young people that, that we're having to babysit until we can find a parent, so.
And it gets a little more difficult if we don't have, um, a facility like this available to us. One of the things you begin to worry about is if you're.
Absolutely.
Actually helping people to further a path down the wrong path by putting them in populations where they're exposed to.
Absolutely.
People who are worse off than they are.
I, I don't question the program.
I understand.
What I wanna be sure of is, it was, as it was presented to us, the implication I got is that the other two funding bodies.
Have made a commitment.
Have made a commitment, and I wanna just know the status of that.
Absolutely.
I may not wanna be first.
Sure, we can get that answered, and that's a good.
Just 'cause we passed a resolution doesn't necessarily mean you gotta write the check, right?
Uh, yeah, I guess so.
I mean, 'cause we're just moving it from.
From the ordinance.
It's just moving from one category to another as opposed to, but, I mean, I agree with y'all that I don't wanna loon Wolf the deal, but, but putting, just earmarking it into another budgetary line, it's not necess- yeah. I mean, budgetarily speaking, is it even specifically going to the Rutherford House?
No, it's not.
It's just going from one.
It's going into a sub-object that it can be potentially spent out of a contractual services account.
Great. Any other, uh, questions on those? If not, uh, Mr. Thompson, uh, what about any tabled legislation, uh?
I have heard from the administration that they want to remove either of these.
No, not at this time.
And I think it's my understanding what we're, what we're waiting for is to, um, you know, we have the, uh, Ordinance 71, um, and until we take some action on that, we're gonna leave the other, um, item, uh, Ordinance 54 on the, uh, table until we've taken action on the other, uh, item, is sort of the, the request that's out there. Um, all right, I see no additional questions, so we are now, uh, under property standards appeals, and Mr. Green. What do we have?
I think, um, B60, E68. There we go. Yeah, the first case, uh, am I doing this right, you know?
Yeah, you're correct, uh, E68 is first.
Okay, all right. There we go. This was, um, an actual total demolish that has, that has been done by the owner. Pretty much everything except for some of the lumber, cinder blocks, um, just pretty much what still remains, though. Not a whole lot, the whole house has been removed. The owner's asked for a couple more weeks to, um, to finish up getting the rest of that debris removed.
Is it, is it still fenced around the exterior of the property, sir?
Yes.
It is? So move for 60 days.
Second, yeah, or, uh, so that's a motion by, uh, Councilman Jenkins, did I hear a second from Councilman Bradford?
I did.
Right.
What's that?
E60.
Mr. Chairman, what was the motion for 60 days?
60-day extension, yeah.
You want 30 days? Make it 30 days.
I second that amendment. Are they substitute? No, we, we talking about ourselves.
Okay, so we've got the substitute motion from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Bradford for a 30-day extension, and, uh, votes have been cast, and what we got? Oh, uh, Councilman Bowman, I think we're still waiting on.
Sorry, I was too fast.
Didn't register yours. Uh, yeah, okay, so that passes 6-0. Great.
Okay.
So that's been granted, and we'll move on to the next case?
The next case is 463 Mark Street. Okay, this is demo rehab, um, it's a new case. Uh, the property owner has started rehab on the structure, um, let me just go through the pictures a little bit for you there. As you can see, some of the seals have been replaced, a lot of the rotten wood has been replaced. Uh, what I've asked the owner to do is to back up, go back to the roof, fix your roof, fix your faceboard, and then work down the structure on the exterior of the structure, and, um, is asked for 60 days to continue rehabilitation.
I make that motion to grant 60 days.
I am fairly sure this is in your district, right, Mark?
I think so, I think so.
I'm pretty, I was like, I don't think Mark's in that, but.
Be happy to support you.
As fellow chairman, I think this is the. As fellow chairman, I think this is the second property standards case I've had in my whole time in the council.
Really? Good lord, I had 15 of them the first week. I'm kidding. Had my share. All right. We have got a motion from Councilman Corbin, seconded by Councilman Flurry. I believe all votes have been cast, and looks like that result is probably going to be five, six to zero, yeah. Motion passes. Is that all you have today?
Yep.
Thank you, Terrence. We certainly appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
We do not have any ADO appeals today. There's no MPC or zoning appeals. Are there any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
There are none.
Okay. We are now at reports from officers, boards, or committees. Did anybody want to give a report from any of their recent meetings? I know we had a audit and finance committee meeting that just occurred.
We may be, we'll have a report on that tomorrow.
Wonderful. Only other thing I wanted to mention briefly, we did receive the most recent infrastructure report, so.
When did we receive it?
Oh, it may be in your mailbox.
Right now.
So, yeah.
I just got it this morning.
Very recently. Yeah, so.
I was waiting on that to schedule another one. I was like, well, I've been waiting for like.
No, we, we just got them. So I was just going to say, be on the lookout for that. And if y'all want to schedule a review of that coming up, that would be fantastic and in keeping with our requirements. So we'll look, we'll look, see a meeting in the next month or so.
Yeah, I'd like to do it in the beginning of September. Let me just check my calendar, and I'll propose a time commensurate with our first council meetings, what have you.
That'll work great. All right, let's see where it clerks report.
Oh, one other thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then depending on William Bradford saying where we are on the, are we poised to have the initial draft of the document for review in a public safety committee meeting?
I believe so. Do you want to still schedule it this week?
I, I'd like to if, if, if there is something at a level where we can distribute it to the members.
We have a, we've incorporated all the recommendations from animal services, and I think we're at a point now that we can at least have preliminary discussions and public safety committee meeting.
All right, maybe I will get with the chair after the meeting and see what his schedule allows for that type of.
Sounds good. Councilman Flurry, I believe, is the chair of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, under public safety, I'd like to ask about, we were going to discuss about these signs on the corners. I noticed in my area that we got city signs on telephone poles. And I'm just wondering if that's our standard procedure, because to me, we're sending the wrong message to the people that are put in these garage sales.
What kind of signs do we have?
We got city sign.
We should not. What signs do you see?
I'll get pictures, but they're, they're city speeding signs and everything that are on telephone poles.
Speeding sign.
Like 35 mile an hour?
Shouldn't be.
Okay.
They should have their own.
Well, I just want to know where we were on that, because we've still, we were going to, I think y'all were going to give us a report on who's in charge of enforcing, because it seems that we've continued to be bombarded on corners with signs.
We're working on that.
Probably only just starting. Wait till September 8th.
Councilman Flurry, can I just ask, are you saying that there are posted speed limit signs on?
On telephone poles?
As opposed to having their own independent pole? Okay. That's what I need to know. Okay, thank you.
It's the Wild West out there. Yeah. What do y'all got going on?
There are, there are a couple street signs. I know in my district there are.
Mr. Chairman?
And Mr. Flurry, the mayor's office will have an announcement in the next week or so, taking care of a lot of the signs that are in the intersections. But I think the council will be very pleased with the action.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and I'll say in reverse, I've actually noticed lately a lot of poles that have no sign on them. Like, what is this pole for? At some point, must have had a sign on it, and I don't know where it is. But I'll start making note of those things. But, yeah, there's lots of, lots of things from years of not paying close attention that may have accumulated by this point. And now that we're paying closer attention, we're catching a lot of things. So we'll certainly report that. I don't see any other requests for officers, boards, and committees right now. If that is the case, I will recognize Arthur Thompson for the clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a lot of appeal in SC 5415. I believe it's a subdivision plat. Matter will be held on September the 8th. We also have received at least one, probably two other appeals where the dates and the letters have not gone out, but I can make a report on that tomorrow also. And we have two appointments by the mayor that will appear on the next agenda. One is to the DDA, Mr. John Hubbard, and the others to the Streetport Hall Mortgage Authority Reverend Galvin Austin.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to consider suspending the rule since those two people are here. If anybody wanted to ask them questions, it would be a shame to make them come.
I would welcome that. Both of these individuals are here today. And so is that a motion to suspend the rules?
If somebody's interested in asking them any questions. If not, I'm, since I know both the gentlemen and know what they've done for our community.
You have questions?
I don't.
Okay. Then there is a motion to suspend the rule from Councilman Jenkins, seconded by the chair. And if we will cast votes on that, we can call these gentlemen up and see if they have any questions.
Mr. Flurry and Mr. Bowman.
All right, they're all in. And it looks like motion passes 6-0. I'll start in the order they're listed on the agenda with, or I should say, does anybody have a question for either of these nominees specifically?
I want for Mr. Hubbard and Reverend Austin.
Okay, then we will call them in order. Mr. Hubbard, if you could come up first, that'd be great.
How are you?
I think I'll go into very positive right now.
Mr. Hubbard, hi.
Yes, sir.
I have, I have two questions specifically, and then I may have additional with mine. One is a direct question to you, and then one's going to be a broader question. And it may not necessarily be directed to you, but it, it would be a question that I have this opportunity to ask.
Yes, sir.
And I would ask the administration to chime in on it. You've been, and let me acknowledge your, your work in this city. You've been a great contributor to the, many of the nonprofits and goodwill events that has made this city good.
Thank you.
I mean, and you're very, you're very broad in your, in your, you know, contributions to, to the, to this city, various, just, just a very diverse approach to, to giving back to the city. I want, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Specifically, how, how long have you, this is a reappointment, is that correct, man?
That's correct, yes, sir.
So how long have you been on the DDA board?
Over 15 years.
Over 15 years?
Yes, sir.
Me, without getting into a whole lot, can you tell me what you feel that you have contributed to the, to this board over the last few years?
That's, there are, it is not about any one person. Let me, let me start. I didn't do anything, but we as a group are like-minded in that we want to do things that are positive for downtown, not unlike the DSDC group that we talked, y'all talked about earlier on reversionary rights. But DDA looks at and tries to, I guess, capture the imagination of developers. We don't have a lot of funds. We, and we are stingy with those. They are allocated as incentives or really more often, if, we have a facade grant. And oftentimes we, and I don't want to put this in a, in a negative light, but it's not a lot of money, but it's a carrot to get that first step done, to get the facade, to get the face of downtown looking good. And we've been doing that for a long, long time. And it is, but there are, everybody on there is there for the same reason. It is, it is, and I know there's new people coming on, and I know there'll be new ideas. And we welcome all of those. But we have honest, open discussions without emotion about why, what you can do, what you should do, and what we will do. And that's the part that I like the most of being able to, to do it without, you know, if you will, stepping on toes or having emotion involved, to have that outcome that's best for downtown. Because, you know, I don't want property downtown. I don't want to own property downtown. We do things to make the face of downtown better. And, and there's a long list of good things that have happened there.
I'm in on the board.
There's seven.
Seven. And again, I'm not questioning your, your.
I'm wide open. Just whatever you want to ask, just throw, throw it this way.
No, no, I'm not. I, I, my concern was, and it, and it appeared to me over the weekend when I was looking at most of our boards and commissions that the city appoints. And this is not directly to you. I'm talking generically to my colleagues and to the mayor administration.
Right.
It just appears to me that, that, I mean, we're all term limited and eight-year maximum. I was just wondering, it would be, would it be beneficial for some of our boards, commissions to be term limited as relates to the number of years they can serve? This city is a very broad city, and I'm not talking to you specifically, that ideas, young blood, new blood, sometimes don't have the opportunity to serve on various boards and commissions if, if we, if we allow, you know, longevity to exist. And I know we need continuity. And I think the result of, of one of the issues that came forth today was a result of fear of marriage, being familiar with the situation so that we, you could work together with the young and the experienced to, to come to some type of consensus on why, how we can benefit that, that project. But at the same time, it just seems though that, that may be opportunities where we may have to, not, not now, but somewhere, look at the possibility of, of having some type of term limitation year-wise so that we can rotate, rotate people that want to serve on our various boards and commissions. But I want to appreciate you for, for your service and for the experience that you've bring to that board and the other entities on which you serve on.
If, I'll never suggest I'm smarter than anyone, but the historical knowledge, the, the reasons we did X, Y, and Z, and the pitfalls that we have experienced as we all grow and get older, we've known, well, I'd have done it a different way if I'd have known X, Y, and Z. That may be something I contribute as we talk about things. We've had new executive directors. Liz is awesome. She hustles, and we can't ask for anyone better. The, but there's institutional wisdom, if you will, that I think there's times that I've shied the light on issues and matters that others didn't appreciate exist downtown. And this is a, there's a lot of investors in downtown that have whatever their own motivation to do whatever they're doing or not do whatever they should, what I feel that would be better for downtown. But we have, it's nice to have that thrown into our dialogue as we talk about matters.
Sure, I understand. And my, you know, again, we had a meeting prior to this meeting, an audit meeting, and Chairman Stepherson and our fine gentleman, Councilman Corbin. I mean, we was enlightened by some issues that only maybe Councilman Jenkins and them been, been the experience in the, in the, in the council that served first term. The new, new guys, we didn't know or were aware of the status of, of some of the audit issues. And I expressed to them that they're going to be gone, and we're going to lose that, that, that continuity of knowledge, because it takes time to understand a lot of things around here. But at the same time, regardless of how much knowledge they have, they're going to have to go. You know, they can't, they can't seek reelection. So, and then, you know, it's up to those that get elected to have an understanding of how certain aspects of whatever board or commission or council they serve on to, to get that understanding and to exercise their knowledge in a positive way. So, so I understand, and that's very important to have that, that experience and that continuity. I don't, you know, I think y'all stagger, right? Is it stagger terms? Is that the way it works?
I believe that's correct. And, and.
Yeah.
They are, but not every administration has acted when someone left. DDA, I mean, they, we have to be a part of downtown to be eligible to serve on DDA. Someone retires, they office, no longer office downtown, they don't live downtown. And not everyone has taken action on that. And.
Trying to make up. Because a lot of, a lot of, a lot of terms had already expired, they just hadn't been reported. Yeah. Okay.
Councilman Bradford, also, remember, some of these boards and committees are functioned to state law as well. So even though, you know, they're maybe a state statute that governs, you name creation board and the appointments and how they operate, ordinance would not necessarily solve term rule issues, or maybe one, the DDA would serve board, how they operate are functioned to state law as well. But we just need to consider those when you make recommendations. Will you make recommendations?
Okay, I haven't even researched it, attorney, but I will. And I'm just saying that I, I just want to see more of our citizens have an opportunity to serve.
Okay, and if I could, I need to just, in a word or two, certainly, you know, I agree with you to a large degree. Many of these boards, not many of them, some of them, or have an ordinance whereby I'm just to look at what certain groups send to me.
Yes.
And sometimes they tell me who they want. Now, this one particularly, we've already appointed, I think, probably two new members, because one came from the council. Actually, you all were the first ones who asked me to when we had a term to expire. And then we had another one that came to us, and we appointed that new person. And I know that this one is coming from DSDC. And they sent me three names. I mean, the ordinance says they have to send me at least three names, and then they, they tell me who they want. And, you know, if I don't have a problem with the person, and I know the person has served well, you now ask questions, you know, tell me what this person contributes. I know that we have some new members, and we needed to have some institutional knowledge left there. And they did want Mr. Hubbard back, and I thought he had done a great job throughout the city. So that's why we're here today with him. And of course, his term does expire.
I have the highest respect for Mr. Hubbard, and he just happens to be the guy to stand there when I ask my questions.
Thank you.
My wife asks tough questions too.
Does she? Because I do too.
Councilman Flurry.
Hubbard, I had one question. What do you think is the greatest need downtown? Would it be parking?
Parking is, parking in the right place. That is, it just stymies so much. And there's, there are developers that are, Liz takes around town regularly, and, and that lack of parking in the vicinity is, is a big deal. I mean.
Well, I just want to ask that, and I don't want to put you on the spot by I-49 through the city, but I hope that you all will keep an open mind as to what's best, because I believe that will help downtown if they had an exit on and off around. So, just a comment, not asking you to.
I don't think anyone will ask our vote on that.
That is true. I think sometimes, oh, I appreciate we have a number of very passionate advocates for I-49 through the city. Sometimes I think maybe they're lobbying the wrong people. They need to focus on some of the people who actually have a vote.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And make sure those people agree with them first and foremost. But, no, John, I would say as somebody who's represented downtown for a while now, I certainly appreciate your efforts and, and realize the challenges that, that come with downtown, and, and I'm excited with the, you know, sort of the momentum that I see right now. I see we're starting to overcome some of those long-term challenges where I I see we've, we're starting to overcome some of those long-term challenges, we're identifying some of the shorter-term ones in the future, uh, and taking a more proactive position on, uh, on addressing those, so, uh, I thank you for, uh, the part that you played in getting us there, and, uh, look forward to having you serve for a longer time, so thank you so much for the service you've given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, and let's see, we've got, uh, Reverend Austin here next on the list. Anybody have any questions?
The last shall be first and the first shall be last.
There you go. Anybody have questions for Reverend Austin today?
I, I just had to ask him two questions. Reverend Austin, how you doing?
I'm on.
Have you served on the, on any board or commission for the city before?
No.
This your first opportunity? How familiar are you with the, uh, the Board on Mortgage Authority?
Nineteen seventy-eight, Home Mortgage Board Authority was formed. Over the years, it was audited in two thousand thirteen, uh, found that it had somewhere in the neighborhood of two-point-three million dollars. During the transition, uh, that audit, two of the board members went home to be with the Lord. The board itself became inactive. Uh, upon discussion, uh, with our mayor, uh, to ask me to serve, I am known as, uh, as an inquisitive person. In essence, I'm nosy. So I did my research. The mayor and I talked, and the mayor said, have you made up your mind? And it's personal. I said, well, I'm thinking about it. She said, have you prayed about it? And I said, not really. She said, well, pray about it, hesitantly. I said, you still there? She said, I'm waiting on you to pray. So here I stand because I prayed about it. This board is a need, uh, and I want to thank Ms. Bradford for giving me the, the link on to look what I found. The function of this board is to provide services related to the housing, the mortgage financing, and related services to promote a, the development of housing, whether it's single or multifamily dwelling. And it's gonna take the working of the board, the criteria, uh, to be able to assist individuals that meet the criteria. Uh, when I drive around this city, and even in District C, there is a need. In District D, there's a need. Across this city, there's a need. But there's an educational factor that has to take place, because I believe that a lot of people don't know what's available, and I believe this board is a goal. Now, I don't know the parameters, I've talked to Mr. Bradford to kind of give me some input more so, but I believe this is something that we need to take across the city, not predicated to the Martin Luther King, not predicated to the Allen Dale, not predicated to the Motown, but for the city. And I believe if the board does what it's supposed to do, it would be a, a good serving purpose, and I hope that I bring something to the board. I have a passion for people, but I also have a passion for my city.
Well, I was convinced once you prayed with the mayor on the phone.
And Reverend Austin, I just want to make sure, um, and I appreciate you, uh, offering yourself for service on the committee, and I do want to, um, as somebody who always likes to remind people about the master plan, you know, the master plan does, uh, make reference as to, um, where it, uh, you know, where it provides some guidance as to where the funding for the, um, Streetport Home Mortgage Authority can do the city the, the most good in the long run, um, in accomplishing those goals, and, you know, whether or not that's actually where the, the funding ends up in, uh, being allocated at some point, um, I certainly think it's important to make sure that we consider it and, um, that we, we know what is recommended in our master plan. I personally think it's a good use of, of the, the funding, I think it's a, a good idea that would serve the overall purposes of the Streetport Home Mortgage Authority, and so if you haven't looked at that yet, I'll make sure and pull a copy of it for you, that particular section of the plan, um, and, and would love to share it with you if you hadn't happened to see that, that, I know that plan is this big, and that's only a couple pages of it, so if, if it got lost anywhere, I do want to make sure and make that available to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, um, in my research, there was a discussion regarding the funds that were applied to this mortgage, to this board during previous tenure to take what funds that were there to utilize in another venue, and thank God it didn't happen, but it's, it's a part of, it's a part of the agenda that's in there. It was allocated for what it was allocated for, and there were some individuals thought that since it was not active, that the money should be taken and used for something else. If money is earmarked for what it's earmarked for, then it should be used for what it's used for.
I like it. Sounds like you, sounds like you did pay attention. Great, anybody have any additional question? Thank you so much, we appreciate you being here.
And the reason I brought it up, just so they were clear, unless somebody has a reason for them, I don't see them having to come back in two weeks' time, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, at this point, I think, um, I think that is all we had on our clerk's report, anything else? Additional?
Nothing else.
All right, additional communications from the mayor, did y'all have anything else at this time?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Um, and so at that rate, we are adjourned, and, uh, let us know if we have any additional questions. I guess it's distracting, you get like five phone calls, there's accounts, you know, text messages and emails, you're like-